Okay, all right, we have five o'clock, and so I'm gonna call the meeting to order for the Village Board of Oregon for Monday, January seventeenth, 2022. Candy, if you would take role?
Good. Good. Fashions?
Here.
Bealow? Bush?
Here.
Stitch?
Here.
One?
Here.
Sorry, I meant to. And Violet and Peterson are also.
Yes, okay, so we got the, we still have the A team here tonight. All right, so let's go, let's go, we're gonna, we're gonna remove a couple items, but we'll do it in a little bit here, so let's finish, let's do the approval of the January tenth, 2022 Village Board Meeting Minutes, if I can get a motion in a second. Mike and Carleen, okay, any discussion on those, they were in our packet, all right, see none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, thank you. Public appearances, we have a presentation from Roe Parker regarding Anderson Farm, Anderson Farm County Park. Roe, if you wanna come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. All right. bookmarks aren't working. There you go. Damn. Good evening, everybody, welcome, my name's Roe Parker, I'm with Anderson Park Friends, we're a nonprofit organization here in the Oregon area, and we appreciate the opportunity to talk about some of the things that we do, some of the who, what, where, when, and how we go about this, and our overall mission is to improve the quality of life within the Oregon community, and I think we're succeeding, and hope you agree with that. The first.
It's been doing a funny thing here.
Boy, that's.
Yeah, bookmarks aren't working.
First, first thing to mention, Anderson Farm County Park is a Dane County park, it's one of twenty-six parks that the county operates, it was created first in 2013, first of all, I'd like to start off by saying thank you. It's really through the, the leadership of Dane County, and it goes from the county executive through the supervisors, as well as the, the staff that have really made a concerted effort to be able to create this particular park. I also wanna thank the, the Village of Oregon, we've gotten support from the village, we work closely with several townships, and I wish I had an opportunity to say thank you to our twenty-some partners, privately and publicly, a number of businesses support us. With the, geez, I didn't know I was that heavy.
Well, no, it's been, I think. Here, let me just see. Yeah, for some reason, it's, it, this was doing this right before we started here.
Now I don't feel so bad, Jim.
Well, yeah, for some reason, it keeps scrolling through them all.
The, the origins of the park is connected to the, the Anderson family, Patricia and Lyman Anderson, who many of you know, longtime residents, the Anderson family has been in the, the neighborhood, into the community since the eighteen sixties, they sold property to Dane County Park for a plan, the park was created in 2013, and at the same time, we started the formation of Anderson Park Friends. The, the park features, in a quick overview, it's three hundred acres, the acreage is on the east side of Union Road, just south of the Town of Oregon Hall, there is actually more acreage on the west side of the, the town. I looked at one of the Google reviews, and I was, I had a chuckle, because one of the Google root reviews said, "This is a great cute little park," and they didn't realize that we're like three hundred and ten acres, and we have many more things to do to develop the, the park. It consists of the Arthur Schultz Memorial Forest, who is connected to the Anderson family, family, well-known statewide leader in the early nineteen hundreds, we have hiking trails in that forest, we have a wooded picnic area, we have a variety of prairies at different locations in the, the park, we recently, in the month of November, announced our dog park, a brand-new dog park, and we also have a bike path that connects the south Main Street of Oregon with the dog park, and this is a mere two or three hundred yards from County A, and this will be probably well-known by next summer, that the folks that like to bicycle can come through Main Street, go onto the path, connect with County A, and they can go to any number of other parks in the western part of Dane County, it'll, County A will become one of the major east-west travel spots for bicycles. Oh, geez, I thought I was doing.
No, it's, it's not you, Roe, it's, it's something to do with this program.
Okay, let's, we gotta go back. The Arthur Schultz Memorial Forest, this is about fifteen acres, this was completely overgrown in 2013, we've removed any, a number of invasive species, created close to one mile of hiking trails, and we have the wooded picnic area. The, the nice thing about it, it has a lot of nice features, and this is one of the best photographs, this was from two years ago, the fall color, in the wooded picnic area. I might wanna say with the Arthur Schultz Forest, it's one of three forests within the, the park, there is actually a larger forest, which is forty-five acres, at the western boundary of the park, that is very hard to get to, but it is considered to be public land, and is in our future. We also have been developing prairie since 2013, we developed the Schultz Prairie, adjacent to the Schultz Woods, five acres in length, or five acres in size, we also worked on the dog park, the dog park is unique, that it has thirty-five acres, thirty-six acres worth of prairie, there's some elevation changes, it's quite attractive, we announced the opening in November of this last year, and we had a recent successful doggy playday event last Thursday, attended by over fifty people. In addition, one of the unique features next to that dog park is the start of our community orchard, ten apple trees, ten peach trees, that we will work with the community to end the Oregon area food pantry. The, the next item is the Anderson Farm Center, it consists of three major components, the first part, you might have heard of, the food pantry garden, we currently have a half-acre under cultivation for the food pantry garden, we also have what we refer to as community gardens, there are twenty-three of those, they're, it's a misnomer to label it a community garden, these are large, one hundred by one hundred-foot plots of land, part of the, those gardens, we lease to seventeen monk families, and we support them, it's part of our recent initiative to be inclusive and diverse, we do have long-term plans to increase the small-scale agricultural concept. Now, keep in mind that an agricultural mission within a recreational park is rather a unique feature, we're one of two parks in the Dane County system that has an agricultural mission, and the reason for that is, that was one of the wishes of the Anderson family, so that we have started it with the food pantry garden, we have started it with the community gardens, and that we are working on probably a five- or six-year plan to create the infrastructure that goes along with what we commonly call a, a farm. There's forty acres that we have designated for agriculture at the park, very unique to have forty acres, currently, we're cultivating twelve acres, we have recently, this last year, installed an agricultural well, and a pump, very crucial for being able to grow fresh vegetables, and we were really excited about this, because in order to get small businesses who are growing fresh produce to the park, they need a source of water, and we do have that. That was only part of the water situation, we needed to get the water from the pump to the actual plot of land, and that we've come up with a concept of creating an irrigation system that will go to each and every parcel within that twelve acres, so we're gonna be irrigating twelve out of the forty acres, the remaining acreage, we'd like to irrigate within about five or six years. Now, tonight, I am just so pleased to be able to announce to you, as well as the community, the successful completion of our fundraising effort to raise over twenty thousand dollars to be able to, to do this, we received notification this afternoon of a seventeen hundred dollar a grant, and literally, it's, we consider it the last piece of the puzzle, so that we're looking forward to install that this next, this next spring. In addition, in our future is to create three agricultural buildings, and at the same time, some of you that have been in the community for an extended period of time know that there is a farmhouse on park property, it is public property, and that's at eight oh five Union Road, this used to be part of the Anderson family. This, this is a overview look of the end, what we, the twelve acres that I referred to, the house is in the, the lower right-hand corner, and that it is accessible from the Union Road, the, forward and back, that's like life, you take two footsteps forward and you go one back, right? Our member growth, membership growth has been excellent, we started with zero members, it started in a small meeting at the Oregon Public Library, we met for about six months before we could do our first particular project, which was forest restoration, and we grew from there, this last year, we ended with two hundred and fourteen members, we have an eighty-five percent renewal rate of our membership each and every year, we're quite pleased about that. People ask, Roe, how do you do this, and one of the, the ways that we can do this is through volunteer power, and the, the number of hours of volunteer time that has been allocated to this has just been phenomenal, we started with zero hours, and this last year, we went to an all-time high of three thousand nine hundred hours were allocated to what you know as east of Union Road, so it's the Schultz Forest, the prairies, somewhat the food pantry gardens, in total, in a five-year period, we've had over fourteen thousand four hundred and sixty hours, that the, we're into six figures with the value, if you look at national research, the value of one hour of volunteer time is twenty-eight dollars and some sixty-odd cents, so this is money that we are saving Dane County taxpayers. Volunteers, this is example of the, the scouts, we work with a variety of organizations, we continually work with the boy and the girl scouts, at the same time, we reach out to corporations to engage them in volunteer activities, for instance, last fall, we planted seven thousand native plants in one of the drainage basins, we worked with volunteers from the Exact Sciences Corporation, they came out to the park and donated their time, so we have some tradition, we have some outstanding volunteer support, and the, the leadership of our board is quite good at being able to plan, organize, as well as motivate people to come back time after time after time, year after year. As you can see, I'm getting close to the end here. Nostalgias, we do a variety of events, we do work events each and every month, we go January to December, we have large and small events, we like to do educational events, a number of us have educational backgrounds, we sponsor maple syrup day in early March for the second graders out of Brooklyn Elementary, Arbor Day is the last Friday in the month of April, and we work with the sixth graders at Rome Corners, we also have a candlelight and bonfire celebration, we took a, a year off last year, we came back this year, sponsored it, it's always the first Saturday of November, we were astounded to attract seven hundred and fifty people to that event, it's a three-hour event, we light up the hiking trails with tiki torches and luminaries, we had the Healthy Parks, Healthy You group come out and provide health information, and we like to do a variety of fun things, we, we parked over two hundred and eighty cars, and one person said, "We're gonna have to work with Jeff to figure out traffic patterns, as well as local law enforcement," because there were a large number of cars that came to the park. The, the scouts, we work with them on a variety of projects, their Eagle Projects include wildlife, building bat houses, kestrel houses, and Aldo Leopold benches, we have a bluebird trail, it's part of our citizen research effort, and that, we collect the information, since 2013, we fledged over one hundred and fifty-six bluebirds, and we also have a Snapchat trail camera in the western edge of the park, and we record photographs of wildlife, and then we report that to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. The, the future, to mention some of the things that we are planning in the future, we're gonna be doing a variety of, of, of big and small type of things, we have a sophisticated planning operation, we have a master plan that was created at the origin of the park, that's how I got connected to the, the project, I went to the citizen listening sessions, we are part of a five-year plan for Dane County Parks, the, the county operates in a five-year cycle, the next cycle will start in 2024, and I think in that 2024 period, going through 2028, you'll see a variety of things, that we will move forward on a shelter for the park, we'll move on additional recreational opportunities, we will be expanding more to the western edge of the, the boundary of the park, and this will be including some additional passive recreation activities, for instance, we've just started the beginning part of a discussion for a, a forty-acre savanna, so this will be a woodlot that'll transition into a savanna, providing unique type of native plants, and, and this is the original look and feel of this area, say, three or four hundred years ago, that, in addition to this, the, we hope to be able to attract between six and twelve businesses to the park, we will lease land to small-scale growers, they can lease the land, grow different things, they can make a profit, and we're trying to stimulate a cooperative approach to this, not just everybody stays in their little niche, but we want them to mutually support everybody, and our overall interest in this is to be able to improve the food system in the Oregon area, so this includes within the schools, for low-income people, as well as consumers of individuals. The other thing I'd like to point out is the, one of the handouts I provided the, as I finish here, we provided our, our brochure, it's a little bit out of date, we need to put the dog park map in there, and then I've also included one of our strategic planning documents, we call it grit, grit, growth, and breaking new ground. You'll see that we talk about our strategies, our focus areas, and also the outcomes that we expect to have from the various activities that we do, it includes forests, prairies, food systems, education, and recreation. At that, let me ask if there are any questions.
Anybody comments, or, yeah, Carleen?
I'd just like to comment, I've known Roe for a really long time, and when this park was first brought to, the idea of the park wasn't even a park yet, it was an idea of a park, Roe already had the idea of Friends of Anderson Park, and was diligent right from the start in making this happen, and I can, I know I can say that if Roe had not been as, as persistent and determined as he is, the park would not be near what it is right now, and so I just wanna commend you, Roe, on all of your work, you're an inspiration, and the park, and all of Oregon area benefits from it, thank you.
Thank you for that compliment. Thank you to receive that credit, and I need to share that credit with the, we probably have reached out to over two hundred different volunteers over a five-year period, that they take out the invasive species, they remove buckthorn, and I get to come to the Village Board and take some compliments for that, so thank you for that.
I've seen the scratches on your hands, don't, don't shy away from it.
So, so Roe, I'll just sort of echo what Carleen, I mean, I, I was there at that first bonfire, when it was sort of organized, and I, I'm just, I'm amazed every time I go out there, of what, the changes and the improvements, it's just phenomenal, so congratulations to you and all the volunteers and your board, so keep, keep it up, it's great.
Thank you. One of the things you'll, brand-new things you'll see next year is a, a piece of whimsy, if you will, that we will be installing what we call our fairy door project in the, the Schultz Forest, these are gonna be eleven pieces of art that are about one by two feet, they'll be attached to trees, the concept is to entice parents to bring their kids out to the forest to look for the fairy doors, and at the same time, we do a little education with the, you know, in terms of forest and those type of activities, so you'll see us do little projects like that related to art, and of course, I know a number of you probably remember that we installed a, a great piece, a metal sculpture piece just south of the, the parking lot, was commissioned by the Dane County Parks Commission on July twenty-eighth, and we're really proud to be able to have that, it's a piece of art developed and created by a local artist.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, I just gotta say, the Friends of the Park is a model for what I would hope we can do with some of our other parks, you're really good work.
Well, it's, it's something that we've talked about, Jeff and I, two years ago, were part of a meeting with town people, and part of the discussion was to talk about, how can the Town of Oregon work with the Village of Oregon, and work with Anderson Farm County Park to, to move forward on these concepts of parks, nature restoration, and, and different things like this, there's a variety of ways that we can work together on this, we have access to some resources, you have resources, and, and we, we further things along when we work together, and one of the main things that we emphasized in that is that we wanna take away this concept that people in different municipalities are somehow different, there, there are really no boundary lines, only on the maps that we see for legal purposes, that this park borders on the Village of Oregon, Jeff is a neighbor to the, the park, 'cause he lives right next to the park, but I live seven miles west of Oregon, and I consider Jeff a neighbor who's connected to the park, as well as our friends in, in Brooklyn and stuff, so that, we, we wanna do that, and I think you'll see this in a real fashion in 2022, we have seven signs in the park, these are professionally developed and printed signs that are going to emphasize the heritage of the village, of the townships, and the, the history of the, the Oregon area, which it's important to, for people to understand that, as well as the origins with the Ho-Chung tribe.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, Jeff, you wanna say?
No, we're just, we're thrilled to help out whenever we can, and we've been able to provide wood chips and some equipment, and our message board, and, and we just, we know that it is a large number of village residents that use the park, and we're, we're thrilled to be able to support whenever we can.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate that.
All right, Roe, thank you very much.
Thanks, Roe.
Thanks, Roe.
All right, let's go to four B, we're gonna go to public comment, this part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the Village Board, including items both on and off the agenda, and anybody here in the audience that would like to speak? Don't see anybody, okay, all right, so let me, let's sort of deal with, we have a, a note in front of us, because we are a little shorthanded tonight in terms of trustees, there is a note in front of us, some, some of the items on our original agenda require two-thirds vote, so we're gonna take off, we're gonna have a motion in a second, if you look at the note, eight A, one, two, three, and nine B, C, and D, we're gonna take them off and deal with them on, I think February seventh is what Martin has said, so if we, we need to have a motion in a second to take them off the agenda, Carleen? All right, all right, Luke, all right, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, so we'll deal with these on the seventh. Proclamations and announcements, number five, upcoming meetings, we have that in our packet to get on our calendars, six is report of village officers, Martin has got his usual very detailed report on activities and things that, that we're doing in the village, if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. We can go to six B, was the preliminary geotechnical evaluation of potential library site off Alpine Parkway, that report was in our packet, I'm guessing that we're, we're gonna hear more about this in, in upcoming weeks, probably around the seventh, when we kinda have more discussion about the library sites, but I don't know if anybody's got any comments or questions on that, otherwise, we'll, I'm sure we'll get into more detail on that. We'll go to C then, report from Chief of Police on investigations involving the internet and computer networks, there was a report in the packet, Chief, do you wanna say anything?
Yeah, I'll just speak briefly to it, just to recap, 'cause it's been a little while here, November fifteenth, trustee Bealow had requested that I provide information at a future board meeting regarding internet investigations, so really, this memo's broken up into a couple different parts, the first is that, and the specific question he had addressed with me at the Village Board meeting was that the community wanted to know that there is a process, and that that process is being followed, so, and putting all of this information together, there's a link at the bottom of the first paragraph that takes you to our Criminal Investigations Department policy, and internet crimes is specifically mentioned on page twelve, and further down in the memo, as I explained to the board initially, I was reluctant to really go into depth about how we investigate internet crimes as they relate to the challenges that may come, because while, yes, it may educate our community, it may also provide additional information to someone wanting to commit that sort of crime, so what I did, just to be, I guess, acting in the best interest of the village as a whole, is I felt it would be best to still find that information, but find something that's publicly published, so you'll see that article in there, it is rather old, but it was the more recent one I could find that really encompassed a lot of, I guess it depended on how much the reader really wanted to go into depth in knowing about this sort of activity, but essentially, in chapter one, it really dives into some of the challenges, and really, day-to-day, those challenges expand as technology expands, so, and then further down, back in March of 2020, you know, just as, it's important to follow our policies and to stay up on training and to combat these crimes quickly and as strongly as we can, but it also is just as important to educate our youth about this, this sort of crime, and, and their parents as well, and how we can prevent this crime from even occurring, so actually, back in March of 2020, our SRO worked with Jim Pliner, the principal with the high school, and came up with a short educational video, so there's a link to that, that'll actually take you to our Oregon Police Department website, but the video is on there. And then lastly, just recently, I received a letter from Attorney General Josh Cowell thanking us for a ten-year partnership with the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, we've been a partner with them for, yeah, ten years, I know that, I have been on the ICAC Task Force, as well as our now lieutenant, our detective sergeant is as well, and our current detective, so we remain very active on that task force, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the Chief? All right, Chief, thank you for that.
Randy, you went, you missed, you jumped over the geotech report?
No, I didn't.
You got it. Oh, you did?
Yeah.
I spotted some less stuff, sorry.
We did it. All right, I don't think, so Jeff, we just, we, basically, I just said, we'll, we'll get in, into more detail on the, the tech report on the seventh.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry about that. I was trying, I was having a computer difficulty.
That's all right. All right, we'll go to six D, which is village department head. Any, any department head, seventy, and anything they want to tell the village board or anything? Looks like none. Okay. Six E is village board comments. Anybody here have anything on their mind? Okay. All right.
Probably shouldn't open that up. I have a lot of things on my list.
All right, so that's a no. Carlene?
Actually, you know, can I just say one thing?
Yeah.
I forgot to say about Ro, or about the park. My granddaughters were homeschooled during the worst of the pandemic last year, when everybody was home, and I was doing outdoor science with them. And we went to the park several times at different periods of time. Just wanted to put that in there as well. So, see, I told you.
There you go. Good. That's okay. Good. All right, we'll go to seven, communication miscellaneous business. Seven A is approval of the vouchers. If we get a motion in a second, we'll get it on the table and see if anybody's got any questions. Mike first, and Luke, okay? Any questions? Who wants to go? All right. You, you want, Luke, you got to go. Okay?
Several items listed for tax overpayment. I think we covered this last two, too, but just a reminder. Is this people paying their tax? They're just paying too much, and so are refunding that?
Well, what typically happens is we'll get a payment from an individual. They keep calling and wondering if their tax bill had been paid because they want it paid by December thirty-first. Supposed to be coming from their mortgage company. So they'll come in and make the payment, and then we'll get the payment later from the mortgage company. So then we're just issuing them a refund because it's been paid twice. So some of those large ones, that's what happens with those.
Thank you. Second question for probably Jeff. One zero seven seven two. Sewer twenty twenty-two adaptive management for seventy-five thousand.
Right.
Right. So that, the adaptive management program is our program that we're partnering with MMSD and about twenty other entities for reduction of phosphorus in the Yhara River watershed for the Yhara Winds program. And the adaptive management basically just means that we're working with upstream users, upstream landowners through this organization to implement best management practices for reduction in phosphorus at the source, rather than paying for multimillion-dollar upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant. And so our, our annual contribution to that has been about seventy-five thousand.
This one might be for chief. Just, I don't think I've seen it before, so I was just curious. For Dane County Sheriff's Office, one two three three zero. Dane County ramp parking permit, hundred and eighty dollars.
Yes. So while we are a squad, we still have to rent a permit per year. So we are charged a fee. We have to park up on a ramp whenever we testify at court or when we have to go to the DA's office for any matter. Yeah.
Is that it, Luke? Okay. Anybody else? All right. We, we got a motion in a second. Candy, if you want to take a voice vote, please.
Stitch?
Yeah.
Beshen?
Yes.
Wish?
Yes.
And much.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Seven B is in our packet. We have the Oregon Public Lib, uh, Library Board Meeting minutes for Wednesday, December eighth, twenty twenty-one. That's, was in our packet. Uh, seven C is Oregon Police Department K-nine unit program. And C one is presentation from police department intern. Isabel?
Yeah, so Isabel is our, you can come on up. And Isabel will be here with Officer Coleman. So Isabel is our high school intern, and we thought this was an excellent opportunity to, not only is she interested in being an intern with us just because of our K-nine, but also I thought this was a great professional skill to learn was PowerPoint presenting. So this is the first time she is presenting to any group of people. And she's quite well-prepared. She's been preparing for quite some time. And the whole reason this topic's coming forward to you is, as many of you already know, K-nine Vende has retired. She was our first K-nine ever. The program was quite successful, and Izzy's going to cover that in her presentation along with Officer Coleman. Officer Coleman was the K-nine handler throughout the entire program. What I can tell you is he did an amazing job as a handler, and not too many handlers have to move forward with the challenges he had. He had a total of three different leaders as the police department chiefs. And to maintain success in a K-nine program with different styles of leadership speaks to his work ethic. So K-nine Vende, she was with us for eleven years. What I will say is, you know, eleven, twelve years ago, this community had different needs than it does now. And so we really are looking to revamp the program and make it better and build it off of already the success that K-nine Vende had. So it's, we had this success, but what can we, what's the next level we can take it to, to really help this community? So I'm going to let, turn it over to Izzy and Officer Coleman here.
So Vende went into service on the thirty-first of October. She was about a year old, and then she retired on the thirty-first of October of this last year, when she was twelve. For training, she did a four-week course with Officer Coleman, and she certified in drug detection tracking. They did ongoing training for about twenty to thirty hours each month. And for annual certification, there was a requirement of at least ninety-three percent, and we can gladly say that Vende passed with a hundred percent every time. She got to train in many different environments that include cargo ships and different airplanes, haunted houses, sports stadiums, and she also got to work with the Madison Mounted Patrol. As for category of work, we are one of two departments that have single-purpose canines. UWPD also has single-purpose canines, but they also use patrol canines as well. For Vende's career, we had a software change in two thousand seventeen, so we only have the last four years of her data.
Yeah, so during that time, over the, over the entire time of her career, she was deployed seven hundred and fifty-eight times. Deployments ranged from anywhere from being called up to assist on traffic stops, to assist on searching for evidence, searching for missing people, or possible, uh, searching for, for suspects that had fled from the scene. We also had the opportunity, three years ago, or before the pandemic, to assist Dane County Narcotics Task, uh, Gang Task Force over the summer. During that time, I don't know the exact time, but I deployed several times to assist, basically called DC NAG, in, in high-performance drug arrests, drug investigations up in the city of Madison and outlying county areas. She also participated in one hundred and seventy-five demonstrations or special events. Shows ranged from private functions to also showing up at National Night Out, Safety Camp, and things like that where Vende gets to see the public and stuff like that. Over her time, she was utilized for fifteen, uh, tracks of fifteen missing people, and out of that time, she was basically part of it for nine times, finding the missing people. And those also would include possible suspects. Early on in our career, we did a lot more suspect tracking. However, that really tamed back due to the fact that Vende was a single-purpose dog. And then the tracking, basically, for looking for suspects, we would outreach to a different agency, just because Vende didn't have those capabilities to, to assist us besides finding the person. She was requested by twenty-five different departments. Majority of those departments, I would say, happened here in Dane County. However, there were times where we would assist department corrections. I did help a couple of times with some school students outside of Dane County and doing stuff like that. And over the last, her, her career, she has contributed for one hundred and seventy-five physical arrests, where she found something drug-related. And then the last four years with our software change, she also contributed to sixteen confession arrests. Basically, we contribute confession arrests, or when I show up and I tell the person who I am, and then I have my partner with me, and they just say, hey, look, let's make this easy, and they tell us that they have stuff on them, and stuff like that. Obviously, Vende gets upset because she likes to play. However, that made our job a lot easier, since.
So in the last four years, she's had multiple indications of different substances.
Yeah, so I guess during those, those substances, and Izzy will talk about it in a second here, she was trained to find, basically marijuana, cocaine, methamphetamines, and heroin, and any of the derivatives from that. At times, we also found we, illegal weapons and also prescription medication. A lot of times, one of the things we saw, a lot of times, is people, unfortunately, who use illegal drugs also have interest in medication, prescription medication, and weapons. So as you'll see on that one chart back there, there's different kinds of medications and stuff like that. A lot of times, those are, those, so, uh, scents were associated with the drugs that Vende would find.
So for marijuana, she found three hundred sixteen point eighty-five grams. And then we cost ranges from hundred to five hundred dollars per ounce, and then.
One big thing with the marijuana, and more so now than it was back when I first started with Vende, and I feel old, keep saying that, when I first started with Vende, is that we are now seeing marijuana, it's not just marijuana, it's marijuana that's laced with fentanyl. And for those who don't know, fentanyl is, is the dangerous drug. It's out there. It's found in heroin, it's found in other kind of drugs. It, I, it gives somebody more for a high. However, it's very dangerous, it's very deadly to just the average person. You and I, anyone in this room, fentanyl can knock you out of a heartbeat. So we're starting to see that as, as Vende got older in her career, we started to see more and more marijuana-laced fentanyl, which is obviously very alarming in itself.
As for heroin, she found four hundred twenty-eight point eight grams of heroin, and this is all, like, within the last four years of our data. And then, so each, each bag of heroin, or like each gram of heroin can be divided into about twenty bags. And then one bag can be resulted in multiple different uses, ranging from one use up to five, depending on tolerance and usage levels. But it can only, it can take up to one, one use to overdose.
And we're starting, as the slide went though, too, knocking wood. We, we went in that low period, we, this is like when we do deal with overdoses, this is what we're primarily dealing with. Once again, the fentanyl, it's a lot of it placed in the heroin. Heroin's bad. It's, it's bad, it's out there. I hate to say it. It's in our community. I always tell people, we have the same problems that bigger cities have. We're just a smaller population, so our problems are a little smaller, but they're fewer. And we're seeing it, like, I see it on the streets quite a bit.
So for cocaine, she's recovered hundred twelve point four grams, which is equal to about two thousand eight hundred hits. And then each gram is equal to about twenty-five hits.
Yeah, the total street value pointed there, about twelve and a half thousand dollars, just a small amount right there.
And then for meth, she has recovered one point two grams, which is around six hits. And then the price can range from three to five hundred per gram.
This photograph here, it's a search of the house, and Izzy put this presentation again here. I was informed that this, this whole photograph of the meth here was actually found on a drug arrest, warrant arrest here in Oregon last year by the DC NAG. That they basically came in, they had intel, and that's some of the products they pulled out of the house here in Oregon. As you can see, our numbers are low. However, I'm starting to see more of a trend now. Meth is becoming bigger. I'm talking to other handlers, other officers in different jurisdictions, just north of our location. And you're progressively seeing methamphetamines become more and more popular from the upper north of Wisconsin, and slowly making its way down here. So I would project is that if we continue, unfortunately, that number's going to continue to go up as well.
And then for crack cocaine, she's found fifty-two grams, and the street value is around three thousand one hundred twenty.
And obviously, crack cocaine is just another derivative of the, of the original cocaine. It's a different form.
And then for prescription drugs, she, which are, have been legally possessed, she's found thirty-six different items, which also contributes to the opioid crisis. As for miscellaneous, she's alerted to eighteen thousand in currency and located three firearms.
And I can say on a personal level, I didn't, without, without having found it in time, like, after, that's, the money is one thing, with three firearms that we got off the street, because we have the dog. And those three firearms, I can tell you, just quickly, came from Oregon here. They're secluded in a vehicle somewhere, whatever. Vende's alert guys into that vehicle, guys into that location, they locate. As an officer on the streets, that's huge, to know that we got three guns off the street.
The reason Vende was important to Oregon is she's a natural deterrent to unwanted behaviors. She can assist in drug detections, assist with missing people. She's assisted with locating different articles and recovering firearms, and responsible for seizing drug and narcotics and ours and surrounding communities. And a lot of members of Oregon love Vende quite a lot.
Now, and I did touch on that slide real quick, is, I've been here, I've been a police officer in Oregon for fourteen years, and some of the problem issues, although pointing them out, if you've been a resident here long enough, you can remember, or people would congregate, where we had issues, some establishments and stuff like that. Once I noticed that Vende was established here, those, those issues became non-existent. We didn't, we didn't see that the congregation of our, our troublesome people at times. I like to believe that, obviously, Vende being here, and I did hear a lot, too, is the K-nine car, or the K-nine officer, we saw Coleman today, we saw Vende, you know, Vende's out there. Most likely, it probably pushed the issue with the community. And we were there, though. I mean, a lot of times, I dealt with members of this community and different communities where they assisted us. But it definitely helped deter that, that issue that we have here. In regards to the opioid deaths in, in Wisconsin, so basically, if you look at Wisconsin opioid deaths, it's fourteen point eight for one hundred thousand. In Dane County, it's sixteen point seven to one hundred thousand people. So as you can see, opioid is, is a big issue. It's a, it's a big issue that we're, we're seeing here in Wisconsin as a whole. And obviously, Dane County being one of the largest counties in the state of Wisconsin, it's a huge issue here within Dane County. And kind of like I mentioned before, I like to, I like to think that, you know, Oregon wouldn't have these problems, but we do have the same problems that these bigger cities that we see around us have, just a little bit smaller in complexion. And actually, you look at the overall opioid deaths in regards to Dane County, according to the entire state of Wisconsin, Dane County is actually higher, which is alarming, which is an issue. Other drug related overdoses that occur, as you can see, all drugs, eight thou, a little over eight thousand. Multi-drugs, a little over four thousand, and all opioids, six thousand. Heroin is, as obviously, you're a key contributor with all that stuff, cocaine, and then meth and other stimulants. And one of the big reasons, obviously, heroin, and I fear to think that marijuana possibly in the future, is, is a fentanyl issue. This stuff getting laced with fentanyl, that's out there. So as you can see, once again, just, just these slides, basically, just kind of help us tell you that there are issues that arise here, and they're definitely something that you need to be looking at seriously. I ain't nothing to say about this one. This is, that's my pride and joy up there. So she would have loved to be here tonight. You know, she's handling retirement well. She's still greeting me at the door when I leave every night, and she's still waiting in the morning when I come home. But if she would have been here today, she'd be all over the place, laughing with her attention, because she gets no attention at home whatsoever, which is a complete farce and a lie. If she was enjoying retirement, she'd say no lie that much about you.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments?
In fact, okay, so, thank you, Izzy.
Yeah, thank you both. Thank you.
So I, I hope from their presentation you took that, obviously, Vende was busy, and so was Officer Coleman, and there's certainly that need in our community. And, you know, at that time, we, when we heard about the retirement, we sat down, and we, we talked about, all right, what is a future K-nine look in our community? I want to first start with, I think what all of us need to worry about is cost. This is all funded through donations. We actually have a very successful fundraising system set up for our K-nine. Um, we actually have a very successful fundraising system set up for our K nine. And we have a lot of support in our community for it. Um, the village does pay a portion of the squad car, uh, but that's because the squad car patrols our village. It's essentially another squad. Um, but any equipment, any training, uh, anything outside of that needed for the K nine is purchased through those donations. So, you know, the question is, so what really changes when we move to this dual purpose or this patrol K nine? So right now, as Vende was, um, she was generally used for tracking missing persons and detecting the presence of narcotics or explosives. Uh, they were rarely used for tracking criminals due to the danger that it presented in those situations. And what I'm looking for is to take that, but then build upon it. So this, this program, the K nine would be trained to track people both missing and criminal, locate discarded items, whether it's drugs, firearms, evidence, detect narcotics, protect their handler, search buildings, and apprehend crime suspects. Now, I, I think any community member would say, is that really necessary? Do we need that? Has that been used in the past? And recently, I was asked a really good question of, how many times have you used, uh, an outside agency for those purposes? Uh, honestly, I don't know. We, we request K nines, so it could be, a month goes by, we don't request, and then all of a sudden, boom, we, we are requesting them. Um, what I can tell you, uh, while those K nines do a great job for us, when we mutually, mutually request them, they're operating under their policies, their procedures, not ours. That's why I would prefer we do this. We move to this, uh, resource so that we train with this dog. They, they're covered under our policies, our procedures, our village knows when this dog is used and why. And it, it's all transparent, it's all in this documentation. There have been many situations that I can honestly think of where we've used them, where it's been very successful, and others where we wish we would have used them. Um, I can tell you, uh, I was lieutenant at the time, and it was actually a rather scary moment. We had, uh, Max Creek broken into, and we were within seconds of the alarm going off. So, uh, we thought we had them, they were inside. Um, talk about the level of use of force you may have to use. You have somebody possibly inside, yeah, I mean, you were within seconds of that alarm going off, and you're outside. As the officers, whether they, you go in or they come out, there is a very strong possibility they have pick of whatever firearms inside, whatever ammunition. I think Max Creek does a great job, don't get me wrong, but this was the situation our officers were in. In this particular circumstance, with a K nine patrol there, there's that possibility that dog could get inside, alert if someone's inside, and then we could come out. We would at least have that very valuable information of, yes, somebody's inside. Or maybe that dog comes out and doesn't alert, it's going to tell our officers, there's a good chance nobody's inside. It's just very valuable information. There's been other situations, I know one, and Officer Coleman could speak to other specific cases. Um, but one I was involved in where we did find a stolen automobile on the north side of Oregon. And of course, we didn't have this resource available, so we had to rely on another agency. And it's a flip of a coin if one's available or even on duty at the time within the county. Um, luckily for us, uh, City of Madison was willing to come down, which is very rare. They have their own busy community to take care of, but they did send one down. Um, and it was a patrol K nine. It did the track of a potential suspect from that stolen vehicle. Uh, we had suspected this individual in our community, but we didn't have enough evidence. We had some, but not enough. And this track led us straight to that residence, and we were able to get a search warrant based off of that piece of information in addition to the other information we had. So again, that's just one simple, um, uh, example as well. I'm not going to go through the whole proposal because I already know you've been through two presentations, and I, I don't want to overdo it for you guys. Um, that's the difference between the two. I've talked about how, uh, not only, um, would it, the, this new K nine be acting under our policies, our procedures, versus relying on mutual aid. But, um, you know, we, we did this with K nine Vende. Officer Coleman would come in and we'd train our officers on how to best work with that dog. Um, so that's valuable to our other staff. Um, we talk about de-escalating situations. There's information in the packet on, um, page five where it talks about the different instruments, different tools we can use to de-escalate on how yet, even with all the research we've done, the patrol K nine can be incredibly effective um, to de-escalate these situations, even with just the simple presence and what Officer Coleman talked about of communicating, look, I have a K nine with me, um, and finding that compliance that way. And with the research we found that's in this proposal, it was no surprise to find out that we are one of two out of all the other agencies, and that's listed on page four of the proposal, that have moved to the K nine patrol, uh, dog, and they've done it for that very reason. They're trying to find these, uh, creative and, uh, factually supported ways to maneuver and move to these different tools that officers can use. Um, you know, I talked about what this, uh, patrol K nine would bring to the table versus what we had with K nine Vende, which she did phenomenal with the training she had. But again, we as a community have changed so much. And with that, we have to keep up, keep up with the challenges and the needs the community needs for public safety right now. And this is why we want to make this change. But there are, it's defined, um, in here, um, the components of the patrol K nine, so the tracking, the locating narcotics, the handler protection, building searches, apprehending suspects. So if you really wanted to read further on those. We, we talked with, uh, several handlers on, you know, what kind of cases do you see for apprehension specifically? Because that's a big change in this program. And, you know, they gave, it's generally used on our higher risk calls like burglary, robbery, homicide, serious assault, kidnapping, significantly violent domestic calls, weapons-related calls. Um, you know, in the proposal, we also talk about, you know, because we, we've seen this question before, what does it look like for your insurance? And, and nothing would change in that component. Uh, we, we talk about liability in here as well. And then, you know, by making this change and making this dog more of what we need as a community, um, we want to look at, you know, what needs to cha- change in training. So that's covered in here as well. Um, NAPWADA, which is the North American Police Work Dog Association, um, they've set the national standards for training. Uh, K nine Vende, that's what she got. And as you hear through the presentation, hundred percent, um, which is phenomenal. A lot of what Vende got for training through NAPWADA would be sa- the same, but it's all in here. So they get, get the obedience, the area search, article search tracking, and then of course, the aggression control. Uh, these would be things too that they'd always have to continually train on. Um, and I, I've detailed what that training looks like, how much of that training they get, they get. Uh, we did put in there some most local statistics. And then also, um, we wanted to give, you know, outside of Oregon, I gave you just a couple minor situations. We used, uh, patrol K nine in. But then, uh, what we added in here too is a Dane County Sheriff's Deputy testimonial, which I, I felt was pretty impactful. And then also, you know, we talk about de-escalation. I can't think of a better example than what's listed in this proposal for the City of Madison where they have this, this man walking down the roadway, um, armed with a loaded pistol in public. So this, these officers are there to keep everybody safe. You have no idea what this man's going to do with this loaded pistol walking down a busy street. And what happens, they end up deploying, um, and having the K nine there. And it was, it ended without anybody having to use deadly force. That's detailed in there. And ultimately, that suspect was charged with first degree attempted homicide, false imprisonment, strangulation, intimidation of victim, um, shoving and kicking a police animal, possession of a firearm, uh, by a felon, and fleeing an officer. But for that to end the way it did, it's just phenomenal. And to, to conclude, so the, the second part, or the, I guess the last part of, um, what I have in the, the packet for this is the policy changes, um, that I would recommend to have this, uh, move forward the most effectively, efficiently, and to have the most accountability over it, which I, I certainly think is very important. You know, this, this is one of the biggest changes I've made under my new leadership as chief. Um, I've worked here for, since two thousand and five, and I, I can't think of a better first change to have as a police chief. Um, you know, I'm always looking for ways to grow and improve and meet the concerns of the community. And I think, you know, this may seem like a small change to some, but, um, it's going to, uh, help in a lot of different ways. And of course, they're outlined in the proposal. Um, I'd be happy to take any questions. Um, you know, I, I, I talked to the, I, sometimes I run things by my father, who's not in law enforcement whatsoever. I don't have family that's law enforcement. I asked him, what do you think about this? And he's like, in, in all, he's just a genuine guy. He, he goes, well, does that dog look any different? Is it scarier looking? And I said, no, it's not, they look the exact same. So I actually thought it was a cool idea. So all of the K nine patrol dogs that are out there in Dane County, the ones that are listed, other than us two, us and Wanakee, uh, they're on the very last page of the proposal. And as you can see, they thrive in their communities with the community relations. So they, they look the same as Ms. K nine Vende there.
Questions, comments? Chief, I have one, um, we move forward with the dual purpose. Um, do you have any timeframe and what you're looking to get a new?
Right, it's a great question.
Yeah.
Um, so the next step would be, uh, we put the policy and roll that out, have, uh, all of our staff obviously sign off on it, review it well, um, get any questions to us. And then we would start, uh, touring some, uh, statewide, uh, kennels and having conversations with them. Uh, we are looking, uh, to make sure this K nine aligns with our, um, mission statement, core values. And it sounds weird because it's a dog, but we do, we want the right kind of dog for our community. Uh, we, you, Officer Coleman and I were talking just before the meeting that we want to make sure this isn't just, you know, that, it's like how, how we expect our cops to be, half cop, but also half human, you know? So for dogs, half public relations too, being able to connect with our community. So, um, it'll be touring some facilities, uh, talking with the trainers to get, get an understanding of what their trainings look like, how, how good they are. Um, talking with other agencies that have used those facilities. And then, uh, the next step would be identifying that train facility, um, looking at litters, you know, and then picking out our dog eventually, and of course, uh, having a process to appoint a handler as well.
Okay. Anybody else?
No question, just, I think it's, uh, the write-up is, it's a great write-up, it shows the value that this, um, change can make for our community. And it was a great presentation and showed the challenges that we are facing, and they, they're growing. So I fully support this. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Carleen, you got comment?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking over the changes in the policy. That was the part that was most interesting. I mean, not that the rest wasn't interesting, but that I was most curious about seeing, I should say. And, um, I would like to be able to just read it in more depth because without the previous presentation, I didn't really understand what I was reading before.
Sure.
You know, what the difference, you, what, what's really at stake here. So, um, I, I commend you on this, and, uh, nice job Izzy and, and Officer Coleman, I appreciate that.
Okay. So, Carleen, are you okay with, uh, there is a mo- there is a recommendation to approve the, the new policy?
So I, I guess I have a couple of questions then. So I'm on page eight of the policy, and I'm assuming that the reason that department members don't unholster their sidearms or check their handcuffs is because that could spark something in, in a, a response of some kind.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, they're just those, it's more things that I'm curious about than it is something that would stand in the way of approving anything.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure you're okay.
Thank you.
All right. So, um, Chief is looking for a motion to approve the, the new policy changes, revisions to the K nine unit policy. We'll look for a motion from, motion from Luke. Can we get a second from Mike? Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Chief, you're all set?
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to seven D, which is the Federal Assist Forfeiture Equitable Sharing Agreement and Certification for the Oregon P D. Staff recommendation is motion to approve. Chief, do you want to say something real quick on this one? It was in our packet.
Yeah, so, um, just on a yearly basis, and poor Lisa gets these emails too. Um, we're reminded that we have to complete the paperwork for, uh, asset forfeiture. Um, I was looking back through our records, and I think the last time we even reported anything other than zero was two thousand and seven and two thousand and nine, which, um, I believe were both large drug arrests. But outside of that, every year, um, we, we report zeros. And really, any large drug arrest, we're looking more to work with the, um, Dane County Drug Unit to move forward with those. And now as things stand, it's pretty rare to push forward on a forfeiture for a criminal matter. And you really need, um, the buy-in from the DA's office, and it's a lot of work on their end, so. We, we filled out the paperwork, it's all zeros. Uh, we plan on sending this in if, if approved, uh, tonight, and, um, that's really.
Okay, all right. Anybody ready for motion in a second on this one? Any other questions before, otherwise we'll take a motion in a second. Carleen first, Luke, okay, any other discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mike?
So the Chief and I have exchanged, uh, several emails on this because I have concerns about this program. Forfeiture is a big deal in the U S. Uh, there's been, the latest numbers I saw was seventy million do- seventy billion dollars of forfeited assets since the year two thousand in the U S now. Assets come in, or forfeiture comes in two different ways. It comes through, uh, civil cases or, uh, criminal cases where you're innocent until proven guilty. And it comes in civil cases where, um, your property is considered guilty until it's proven innocent. So this is a fallout from, um, when the British were, uh, trying to stop smuggling into the colonies. And in order to stop smuggling, they could just grab a ship and say, okay, all the property belongs to us, it's ours, et cetera. So this carryover of British law. Wasn't a big deal, um, until the Reagan administration and the war on drugs, when they passed a rule that started this equitable sharing process. And at the time, equitable sharing meant that eighty percent of the funds that was, that was, um, forfeited would go back to the police departments. And that led to some serious abuses in some police departments, certainly not in Oregon. Uh, this isn't at all a criticism of O P D and isn't meant to be. But, uh, you did have police departments that were, uh, fu- funding themselves basically off of, uh, or at least part of their operations off of asset forfeiture. Enough so that, um, there was bipartisan movement nearly two thousands to pass a reform bill to, to limit some of the abuses. And Wisconsin itself passed a law to limit abuses. And the Wisconsin law is actually fairly good. The Wisconsin law says, uh, you have to have a criminal conviction in order to take someone's assets. That if you're possessing a, repossessing a third party's assets, they have to at least be aware that there was criminal activity going on. And, uh, boy, I'm going to forget the third part. It'll come back to me in a minute. But the, the, what's left are still a couple loopholes. And those are what actually, I asked the Chief if we had policies around it. I'm not actually sure we do. And certainly, it hasn't been, you know, with two, two years of, of, you know, assets being forfeited in, in O P D history in, in the last fifteen years or so. Um, you know, this isn't a huge issue within our area, but I'm thinking, you know, we might want to consider possible policies on this. The two issues are this. The conviction that's needed isn't necessarily of the owner of the property. The conviction that's needed is of a person. So if anyone around the property gets convicted, you can actually, um, seize the property. So this could be a car, this could be a house, this could potentially even be a hotel if they. they knew the criminal activity was going on in the area. So your property's at risk even if you haven't committed the crime. Now, 80%, hold on a second here. I want to be sure I get these numbers right. 90% of property foreclosure or forfeitures occur in civil cases, and 80% of the property forfeited, a person is never convicted for. So it's possible to lose your property without ever having been convicted of doing anything wrong. And since most property that is taken, there's relatively small amounts, a few thousand dollars here, or a few hundred or, or whatever, it's below the threshold where most people consider it feasible to fight to get it back. So a judge can make a determination that we've seized your property, and even in the absence of a criminal conviction, because you're not hiring a lawyer and spending more money than, than was actually seized from you to try and get it back with lawyer's fees and court fees and things like that, a judge can say, well, you're not really interested in getting your property back, it's ours. So what I would like to consider, or would like to see the OPD have, is some sort of policy that a person, in order to lose their property, actually has to be, that person has to be convicted of a crime. I'm not sure if that impedes OPD's functions and activities, or if there's a way that we can phrase something like that that would not impede your work.
I, so I-
But it seems like a good protection.
Yeah, I think, I guess the two things that come to my mind is I could first check in with other Wisconsin police chiefs to see if anyone has an existing policy like that. We all kind of share our policies. But secondly, if that's a no, or the policy don't, doesn't look great, or I guess either way, discussion with Attorney Dragney? Right, Mark? You think that'd be okay?
Yeah.
That may just have to be drafted fresh with us, you know, and I appreciated the heads up, because I had to do some research too. For, for us though, whether it's civil or criminal, which I'm not aware of any civil cases we've ever tried to seize property, but anything criminal has always had to have the stamp of approval from some sort of court proceeding for it to, to finalize if the person contested it. I'm more familiar with property that's illegal to release back or, or things like that when we're talking about actually taking property away from someone. I think even in those cases, a federal judge had to be okay with it. Again, that was back in '09 though, so I'm a little rusty as well. I know that we did have to work with the DA's office though. But yeah, I, we can, I can look into some more and look at if there's policies out there. Yeah.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks for the history lesson.
So Chief, what would you-
I've looked into this a lot.
What do you want us, do you want us, we have a motion in a second to approve?
Yeah, if we could have this approved, I could submit this report, that would be great.
Okay. All right. So we do have a motion in a second to approve. All in favor, say aye? Oh, yeah. Luke?
Yep. I like what you're saying, Mike. This is coming from the United States Department of Justice. I'm just curious if we as a village have the ability to do what you're discussing. I actually don't know, but if it's coming from a higher authority, does the village have the ability to change the process? And I guess it's probably a question for Matt, but-
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good point, and I, I could run it by the AG's office too. They have some attorneys there that I might be able to get in touch with and kind of float these questions out to, to.
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm not an expert.
All right. But we can, we can move forward with this. Okay. So we do have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Chief, and you'll, you'll get back to us after you do some checking. Thank you. All right. Let's go to 7E, which is hiring of Ken Cobrelay. Am I saying that right?
Cobrelay.
Cobrelay. Okay. For the vacant public works mechanic crew person position at $26 per hour. Staff recommendation is to approve. We'll get a motion in a second. I don't think we need to, it was, yep. Luke and Carleen, okay? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay?
Great, thank you.
And then 7F is the Annual Software Support Agreement with Civic Systems LLC for Financial Management Functions that we have in the village. Staff recommendation is to approve. We'll get a motion in a second on that. Luke is the first. We'll get a second. Carleen, thank you. Okay. Any discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
And then we have 7G is Introduction of Resolution Number 22-01, Resolution to Discontinue A Portion of Oregon Parks Avenue. Looks like we, no action is needed. Martin's got a memo in our packet for that, so we don't need any action on that. And then we're on eight. We did, we are going to skip because we tabled A1, 2, and 3. We can go to four, which is Certified Survey Map Creating a Zero Lot Line Duplex at 360 and 3, 632 South Main Street, submitted by James Robert. Plan Commission Staff Recommendation is to approve. Motion from Luke. We'll get a second. From Mike, okay? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We'll go to five. Extraterritorial Certified Survey Map for 1252 U.S. Highway 14 in the town of Rutland to Reconfigure Lot Lines Submitted by John Ziegler. Plan Commission Staff Recommendation is to approve. We'll get a motion in a second for that.
Chief, make a motion.
All right. Luke, thank you. Second. Carleen, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then we'll go to nine, which is Unfinished Business. Items are for discussion, possible action. We'll go to 9A. Resolution Number 22-02, Adopting the Village Board Meeting Agenda. In Packet Policy, Staff Recommendation is to approve that. There was information in our packet. Mike, motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Second. All right, Carleen, we'll take yours. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Yeah, I like it.
All right. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then we'll go down to 9E, because we skipped, are skipping A, B, C, and D. Village of Oregon Citizen Guide to Policing, which also, I think we had some minor changes, didn't we? Martin from last time. So Staff Recommendation is to, is to approve. I'll take a motion in a second. Got it? Mike and Luke, any discussion?
Yeah, just briefly, a quick editing read of this would be good. There's still one or two typos left in it.
Okay. Okay. All right. We'll get those fixed. All right. So we've got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. F is the Utility Roundup Program. Let's see. Lisa, do you want to? This was something that Trustee Beal brought forward. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, he wanted us to look into doing the roundup policy, or roundup program through our, our utility billing that we have in the village, which is a monthly billing. And as you can see, we have a lot of things happening with the utilities over the next five or six years with rate increases and the new sewer, not new sewer, but the sewer construction that has to happen. So we didn't feel at this time that it would be a good time to ask for people to donate extra money when their actual individual utility bills will probably, will be going over, up over the next number of years.
Okay. So you're not looking, I don't see any action. You just, was that informational for us, or?
At this point, I think it's just informational. I mean, if, once Derek is back and he wants us to pursue it more, then we'll have to get approval-
Okay.
-on how that will happen.
Okay.
And we really don't have the staff time to put towards somebody figuring out how this would all work and-
All right. All right, we'll have further discussion.
Yeah. In the future, you know, we could bring this back, you know, in a few years, once we get through a couple of the rate increases for the sewer and the water, to see kind of where we're sitting at. And, and with the city, I mean, Stoughton is larger than we are, and annually, they take in $2,500.
Okay.
And it doesn't actually go back to any department within the city. It goes to an outlying community service program.
Okay. All right.
Which is valuable, but I just don't know, we don't have the staff to implement that at this time.
All right. I would, I would want to bring it when Derek comes back.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right. Can we go to 10? New Business.
Hmm.
Yeah, did you-
You've got, you skipped a spot.
What did I skip?
Uh, hold on.
Or is that one we tabled, Mike?
10A. Oh, excuse me. Never mind.
Yeah, I know, I know how it is. I've done it myself. All right, we're on to New Business, which is 10A, Purchase of Electronic Devices for Elected Officials and Related Policies. Staff Recommendation is, motion is to authorize and purchase and develop the policy. I'm one of those that gets a hard copy, so they probably like that, that I don't keep requesting that. But, so, do you want to say anything, Candy, or, or, just to cut down on some of that copy? Yeah?
Cut down on some cost savings.
So is it a, I can't remember, is it a tablet what we would get, or? You had a recommendation too, I think, yeah.
It's the Microsoft Surface Pro. And what it is, is it's a tablet, but it's a large tablet that you have in front of you. But my thinking is to also have a, an actual keyboard that comes with it.
Yeah.
So you can use it kind of like a laptop.
Okay.
So you can respond to your emails quickly.
Got it.
Check your packets and-
Okay. All right.
And you can take it with you to each meeting that you're assigned to.
Okay. All right, sounds good. So there, we're, staff is looking for a motion to authorize the purchase and then develop a policy? Yeah, currently?
Candy, a question about that. So currently, agendas are PDFs, and we open them on whatever device, or we get them printed. But they, like, right now, that PDF is not stored on this, on this tablet, correct? It's stored-
Well, it's-
I'm just want, I'm just wondering, like, I, I don't have a tablet except for an iPad, and so I'm thinking, so how do we do, would it have storage capacity for the things that are-
It does, and all of our packets are online, so you can pull them up anytime online. So you could pull it up in a browser, or you could save it to your device.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, I read my packets on that.
Oh, my. Yeah, maybe a little bigger, Mike. I don't think I could do it, so.
This would also help some of our eyes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So we're looking for a motion in a second. I think this is a good, a good, good thing for us. Motion in a second to let staff purchase and develop a policy for us.
Just one last question.
Yeah, Mike coming.
You see this as a, as a cost savings over time?
I do. I do see it as like, I mean, we, when we, when we print packets, sometimes, you know, they can be a hundred pages. We do try to use the front of the, the document we have, but when we're printing, you know, lots and lots of packets, that's ink, that's time that it takes us when we're copying, it takes staff time. I see it as a cost savings and not only a better impact on the environment as well, so.
Well, and these are getting pretty old. They need to be replaced anyway pretty soon.
And I don't, I don't see us getting rid of these. We'll use these for other committees and staff. We'll do that, but this, you'll be able to take with every meeting that you, you were assigned to.
Okay.
So moved.
All right. Mike, and then I saw Luke's. All right. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Candy, is that $16,554 earmarked for anything else, or is it sort of just sitting there?
No, that was the leftover borrowed funds from when we did the telephone, implementation of the new telephone system. So we borrowed $75,000, and that was what we had left over. The project ended under budget.
All right. All right. So we've got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And we're at the 12. Adjournment.